At this time, I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one which is under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We have one council member, Councilmember Schaefer, that is joining us virtually. Craig, you are online, yes?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
So, for that reason, our votes this evening will be roll-call votes and electronic votes. So, we have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. So, once again, special welcome to everyone here and a special welcome to the students, the SMSU students that are also attending this evening. So, thank you very much. We'll move then to Agenda IM number one, which is consider the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting as well as the work session. Both were held on September 10th. The council does have the minutes of both of those meetings. Are there any corrections to note at this time?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Steve, to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We will move to the roll-call vote. I'll call in Stephen Anderson, city clerk, to call the roll.
Lizinski.
Yes.
Molesky.
Yes.
Alcorn.
Yes.
Schroder.
Yes.
Meister.
Yes.
Your birds.
Yes, and the motion does pass. Move then to the items on the consent agenda. We'll bring the consent agenda items up onto the screen. And so, they include the introduction of the ordinance amending the chapter relating to the intoxicating liquor, introduction of the ordinance to repeal the section related to Minnesota Energy Resources franchise agreement, the Whitney Street reconstruction project, consider the resolution for signage, consider the authorization to declare vehicles a surplus property for the Marshall Police Department, the National Highway Safety Grant, as well as the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member wants removed for separate discussion?
And make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Amanda, seconded by John, to approve all of the items on the consent agenda. Discussion on that motion?
Second.
If not, we'll move to a vote.
Meister.
Yes.
Alcorn.
Yes.
Lizinski.
Yes.
Schroder.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Burns. Yes.
Molesky.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda Item number eight. This is an information item from the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, the annual update. We are a -- City of Marshall is a member of the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities that represents us on issues at the Capitol. And representing the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities tonight is Marty Seifert. Welcome, Marty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have a packet in front of each of you, and I'm just have you pull the one out that looks like this, that's got a little chart. And I'm going to walk through the inside, that just that one sheet with you would keep it brief. The legislature, Mr. Mayor members, started in February this year, adjourned in May. It was a non-budget year and a bonding year, but they passed a budget and no bonding. So, a little bit opposite of what expectations were and what customer usage is at that place. By way of introduction, I work at Flaherty and Hood in the capacity of senior lobbyist, representing coalition among other clients, 106 rural cities outside the metro area that have unique needs related to taxes, environment, economic development, and transportation, amongst other issues. So, just walking through the chart real quickly, the goals that were set forward by the Board of Directors add inflation and population adjustment to LGA, which did not see favor in any of the areas. And I think in fairness to the legislature and the governor, you know, they don't know if we're going to have a surplus or not, and to put LG on automatic pilot every year is just probably not good policy in their opinion. And you work with budgets as a city council, you probably don't want to put any of your budgets on autopilot either. So, that's why that didn't reach good favor. The second one, allowing cities to authorize their own local sales tax under certain circumstances, did get favorable treatment in the House and Senate. The governor did not have an opinion on it in his budget. It was pulled out in conference committee for further study. We just went through this in Marshall, as you know, and it is a little frustrating because we have to go to the legislature to get permission, and then you go to the voters and get their permission, and then you impose the sales tax. This was to try to streamline this and not have to run to the legislature. I helped get that passed through, obviously, for the Aquatic Center. But it is nerve-wracking. We wouldn't even have the referendum right now. You know, we put language in last year to allow a front-end vote on the referendum, and your bids came in kind of high. Can you imagine if you had the vote two months from now, and then the bids next year, and then, I mean, you'd be probably three to five million above where we are now just because of inflationary costs. So, you know, while we appreciate the legislature putting that language in, it could be a little bit more nimble if the council is allowed to have say over this with certain circumstances, including a referendum. I mean, there was, we've never at the coalition talked about removing the referendum requirement. We've always want the people to have their say if they want to vote it down. Secondly, the EMS services, particularly in rural Minnesota, we've had a crisis situation with first responders and ambulance services. And even in Marshall, discussion about, you know, having mutual aid with Cottonwood or what have you, the 120 we requested was whittled down to a final outcome of 24 million. On the good side, all of that, or almost all of it, will go to rural Minnesota on a formula that we had very heavy part of putting together, and that is the cross-subsidy that happens in many of our small rural areas. You know, if you call 911 and you're on the side of the road, you expect someone to come and, you know, a car accident, for example, to, within a reasonable amount of time, to pick you up and bring you to a medical center. And we're finding out with lack of staff, lack of money, expensive equipment, this is really becoming kind of a crisis in some areas where they're just literally going to fold up and shut down. And then you have to wait that much further for another town that might be 20 miles away to come pick you up off the side of the road or whatever. The reason it is such a big problem, particularly in the rural areas, is that a majority of our calls are Medicare and Medicaid. If you take Medicare and Medicaid, the cost reimbursement is about 39 cents in the dollar for providers, for EMT and ambulance. And you just, I don't care how efficient you are, you can't run a business on 39 cents. It just doesn't work on a dollar. So, this is to band-aid us into next year, and we're going to come back and try to come up with some more solutions, including more aggressive collections on insurance and things. St. James did that, for example. They were at deficit, and they got a little bit more aggressive. Mutual aid with the townships and trying to come up with some creative ways of people who do benefit from EMS services but maybe don't pay into the pie like the cities do. So, next one, water resources. Because there was no bonding bill, we really didn't have anything in that area. And some of you know, and I had worked on this with the new treatment plant here in Marshall, how expensive that was, and we benefited by getting our money before that. Now, we have other cities waiting in line, and unfortunately, you know, there's not going to be enough money for them. And the water rates in some of these cities are going to just be exponentially higher if we don't figure out a way to get this into the bonding bill. I mean, I know, you know, Marshall, we're kind of above average on utilities, but if we didn't have the millions and millions of dollars that came in through the PFA, we would really, really be in trouble, and our ratepayers would have to pay for it, or our property taxpayers would be cross-subsidizing it. On the next page, childcare, housing, economic development. We had no bonding bill. Most of those items would have been in the bonding bill. The licensure reform did not pass. I think some of you know there was some new childcare regulations being proposed, and we had kind of an outcry from particularly the rural providers, and they shelved, the agency in charge of that shelved that for a year and said they're going to study it more. So, thank goodness. We are losing providers, you know, week to week throughout the state. And I know we had a little meeting before, just in Lion County, I think, where, did we say we were short 280 slots in Lion County?
I don't remember the number.
Was it 180? We're short by a lot, just in Lion County, of people that are struggling to find daycare. So, that is an issue the coalition has taken on. And I know Marshall is intimately involved in trying to get something put together for childcare, either a new center, more in-home, both would be nice, so parents have choices. But every time one closes, it is, it impacts a family, and it's difficult for us to get young families to move to areas like this if they don't have a place for childcare. So, it's important for employers, it's important for employees. On transportation, we did have a transportation bill that passed separate from bonding. We did get one-time money for city streets of all sizes at 11.35 million. We also got some money in the corridors of commerce program. Some of you might be familiar with that. Highway 23 is one of those roads, and 19, I believe qualifies in 14. So, what we tried to do is continue to lobby for corridors of commerce. In one year, you may recall, I think when Governor Dayton was in, about 98% went to just Hennepin and Wright County, and then the coalition came in and said, you know, we just can't have the other 85 counties left out and get 2% for us and 98% for two counties. And so, we did have some formula rewrite that we were very involved with to make sure that doesn't happen, and that's why you're, you know, part of the coalitions, to make sure that we have fairness in our distribution of dollars from the state treasury. So, with that, I'll stand for questions.
Okay, thank you, Marty. Questions? Well, let me say, we truly do appreciate the work that not only you do, but your colleagues with Flaherty and Hood on behalf of Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, Marty from Craig, thank you a lot for all you do to help us all. Appreciate it.
Very good. We'll move then to the next agenda item, Agenda IM number nine, to consider the construction manager-adviser approach for the Aquatic Center project and consider adopting the resolution authorizing the staff to finalize an agreement with Contiguity Group, Inc. I'll call first on Sharon Hansen, who's taken the lead on kind of going through a process to evaluate the construction manager approach. Sharon?
Okay. Mr. Mayor and council, as you recall, at the last council meeting on September 10th, council gave authorization and direction to staff to explore construction management services for the Aquatic Center, following a rejection of bids due to being approximately $6 million over engineer's estimate. City staff did reach out to five different construction management firms. Two of those five were actually general contractors who bid on the Aquatic Center project, and three were construction management firms who had experience either with local government projects or, and/or, projects related to aquatic centers or pools. We did interview them on Tuesday, September 17th, and we, being the Aquatic Center Committee, which is made up of Councilmember C. Molesky, Elcorn, and Schaefer. We also included Ron Helgerson, kind of a local expert, retired architect, to give us some perspective on the construction management process, and of course, then his staff. The range of costs for construction management were wide, everything from 379,025 to 1.4 million for the cost of these services. And then also, as part of this, there is some pre-construction costs, meaning that to go through this process, it does mean that the city council are going to commit funds to this particular process before bidding, and we can explain some of those costs as well. We did base our selection on experience qualifications, but also just the perspective as approaching this as a team with Stockwell. We know that we still have to work with Stockwell engineers in terms of redesign. Another key factor was local subcontractor relationships. We really feel strongly that the people perspective is really what matters in some of these projects. And so, those are some of the key factors in making this selection. So, it was recommended that we proceed with integrity. It does mean, as I stated before, a pre-construction, pre-bidding cost of 64,350. If the city proceeds, and this would be an additional decision factor down the road as we finalize the agreement, it would mean additional fees of 364,650 during the construction phase, and then also onsite supervision of $25,000 monthly for '25 and $25,750 for the year of 2026. We still are anticipating an 18-month schedule. We'll kind of talk about timing a little bit here, possibly if there are some questions. I do want to add, and this was confirmed by city attorney, this is professional services, so it did not require a formal bidding process. If we had more time, ideally, it would have been ideal to do a request for proposals, do a ranking system of the proposals prior to interview, but really to keep this process moving and being time-sensitive with wanting to rebid this in January, we took the two general contractors, who were the two lowest bids for the initial bidding, and then three construction firms, and that's how the selection was made for terms of interviews. I want to add that there has been additional interest past September 17th, when we did our interviews. I've got two voicemails from another bidder on the project and another construction management firm, and I also have a local contractor who's interested in doing construction management as well. So, an alternative would be to also interview additional firms, but I do worry about timing and delaying the process. And I have David Locke from Stockwell via Zoom if you want to ask about doing that particular route and what that may mean for the schedule. In addition, we really do feel good about integrity. We could obviously interview a lot more firms. There's a lot of firms out there in the state and elsewhere that could do this project. So, really, the process could be endless. Again, the process that we're going through with all five firms that were interviewed, whether they were selected or not, the one thing that was stated over and over again is, we really feel you should do this construction management process. And so, I'm hoping that we trust the construction management process, but also how we went about selecting integrity, and that we can move forward. I do want to add, and I know, Mr. Mayor, you're aware of this, we have some people that are willing to kind of speak on this, that being Ron Helgerson, who knows the construction management process to help give some more information to council. We also have the council members who are on the committee that may want to say some items. And then, we have, still have this fundraising committee led by Amanda Schwartz and Mark Clath, and I know they've heard some feedback from the public, and they might want to add a couple comments, too. So, I will turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor, to engage other speakers if you so wish.
Sharon, Ron, do you want to speak on behalf of the interview committee? And as you're walking up, thank you for providing your time and expertise.
My pleasure.
And volunteering to do this.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I worked in this community as an architect for about 42 years and across five states, and I retired at the end of 2016, got on with my life, and then I was called to sort of dust off. So, it was, it was interesting. The five firms took pretty much the entire day. I found that three of the firms were companies that I had worked with in my work experience. My working relationship with Contiguity goes back about 12 years, not only Lion County Courthouse or Government Center, but Little Falls Schools. And I know that they've got a variety of relationships in our part of the state. In the last week, after the interview, I just touched base with some of our local construction firms, and they've also, many of them had experiences with integrity, and they were just given high marks. I don't want to bore you with the general characteristics of construction management or the general contractor approach, but just in looking at the position of this project, the need to go through a redesign process, basically have a construction, an agent, construction manager, the value engineer things, I mean, there's going to be some hard decisions. If there's romantic notions about certain aspects of this project, they just have to be evaluated appropriately. So, there will be recommendations from the construction manager in terms of potential cost savings. The scope of work has to be redefined. And the one value that, in the process, the method, is that the scope of work will be identified in a variety of bid packages, multiple bid packages. So, for instance, there will be site work, soil or site development, concrete, steel, all the various components of the building become multiple prime contracts. In doing that, there was talk in the interviews, there could be up to 20 prime contracts for this particular project. And what that does is the scope of work, then, many of the contracts are smaller scale, so it, they'll be attractive to our, many of our local contractors, mechanical, electrical, site development folks, finishers, concrete, they all would have an opportunity and interest to participate in this. In a, in a general contractor approach, if Steve is the general contractor, and we're all potential subcontractors and suppliers, we provide our quote to Steve, and he plugs it into his, his calculation sheets, and ultimately, because he is the prime contractor, he has overall responsibility for the project. So, there's costs attributed to his exposure, insurance, general conditions, overhead and profit. So, there's markups on all of the subcontractor proposals that the general is receiving. In construction management, you don't have that because you've got multiple prime contracts. So, you're getting, you're getting all these potentially 20 prime contracts, and the potential savings goes to the city. Any general questions that I might?
I do, just clarification, Ron. I know you and I have worked together before, but with the general contractor, you have a direct approach where there's somebody actually running the job, forcing the subcontractors to stay on time, stay on track.
That's correct.
Construction managers, since you have 20, up to 20 prime contractors, who's forcing them to stay on track and play nice?
There will be a full-time onsite supervisor, and then you've got the rest of the construction management team that are managing all the contracts, they're managing the schedule, they're observing, conducting quality assurance, safety and security. That's, that's part of their responsibility.
It is, but who, ultimately, liability falls back onto the prime contractors, not the construction management team, correct?
Exactly, yeah. Because they do have separate contracts.
Yeah, so we've, so we've lost some protection of the general contractor, making sure, if something goes wrong, we now have 20 people we potentially have to go after, not necessarily 20, hopefully 20 subcontractors, don't goof up. But we've lost that protection of having one point to go to.
Right.
Where now we have, the city could end up, and I'm not saying we will, because whoever we hire hopefully does a good job, but it could get a lot messier if we have problems.
Yeah. With the construction manager's involvement onsite, full-time, you're basically in a position where you're either, you're seeing or perceiving that there might be disputes or issues. So, you're, they're in a position to manage risk in that circumstance.
But if there's a dispute, it comes back to the city to more or less resolve that dispute because we have separate contracts with those people.
Exactly, yeah.
And that involves a lot, that could potentially involve a lot of staff time.
Well, you would have the same circumstance with a general contractor. I mean, the risk is there.
The risk is there, but you have more of one point, because general contractors are saying, we're not working with different people. And I mean, I see the good and the bad on both sides.
At a, at a cost. You're paying for that general contract.
You are, you are, correct. You are paying for that.
And...
Because what's...
Let me tell you, there's, there's some savings to be had, and I think that's, we didn't talk a lot about that.
Following the receipt of bids for these prime contracts, there's, there's prequalification of those contractors. So, your hope is, is that you've got the so-called A students involved in this. So, there is risk, it's a matter of how, how that risk is being managed.
And there's payment and performance bonds.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, there's more risk, but there's a greater reward. You're, you're correct. And that's where, as we, as we talk about taxpayers' money, risk and reward, where do we balance the risk with the reward? Because I've seen, I've worked on both sides of it.
Yep.
Sometimes they both work out well, sometimes they don't.
Yeah.
You know, I know, I think Red Baron Arena, we did project management, correct? And we, and it came in under budget, I just want to clarify that that worked, but there's a lot of change, a lot of duress with, every change already came before council and so, but again, it came in under budget, and it did actually work out at the end. Wouldn't you concur with that, Bob?
Yes, yeah. Well, thank you, Ron, and thank you for your, your time.
And just one more comment, the issues that occur if, if the contractor and/or the construction manager aren't paying attention, if they're conducting their, their services at a distance, then you have, you have troubles.
Right.
And I can't speak behalf of Contiguity, but my experience with them over 12 years has been very positive.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, Craig, and John, and C, you were all involved in the, in the interviews. Any comments either of any of you would like to make at this time? Craig, you?
Well, yeah, I'll go ahead. Again, I want to thank the group and, you know, the, my fellow council members, Ron and the staff, and I want to thank all five of the, of the folks at the, people that came in that we met with. We had five really good contract project management people come in to, you know, to give us, to give us their pitches, and we had a really, really good group to choose from, and it was a difficult decision, but the Contiguity Group just really seemed to kind of fit the piece that I felt really good about where they were coming from, and that, that I really agree with the, with the recommendation that we move forward with Contiguity. And, and, I mean, we're really kind of at a sink or swim, to lack of a better term, and I guess I'm, I'm in favor of swimming. You know, we still, at the end of the day, need a good project for an aquatic center, and I think this is our only good path forward.
Yeah, and we, you know, we, like Craig said, we met with five really amazing groups. I missed a couple of them, so I missed Contiguity, so I was bummed I missed them. But we were really impressed with everybody's resume. I mean, a lot of them said that they would really be advocates for our city, so we felt really comfortable with that. And that's what we need, is somebody that's going to be on our side in our team, that's going to make sure that we meet the original intent of this project. So, we were... So we were really excited about, it was a hard choice, so that was a good decision, or a good problem to have, is, is having a hard, a problem to try to pick the right team, so we were really excited about Contagity.
Yeah, I think we learned a lot in, in the process of interviewing. We learned from each firm, we, we picked, we picked up information, and we could have hired any, any of them, in my opinion. When we'd get done, I'd be like, okay, that's the one, and the next one we'd get done, maybe that's the one. But I feel like when we landed on Contagity, they seem to be a real good fit for what we need, what we need right now.
The other part of the Aquatic Center Committee is the fundraising committee. Mark Clay, you want to make any comments on behalf of the fundraising?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A couple weeks ago, Sharon and Preston and Amy came and talked to the fundraising committee about this project. As you know, we started our fundraising a little over a year ago, I believe, after the vote had passed. We're at about six hundred thousand dollars, there was a good momentum, that momentum is still there. The community still wants this project to move forward. After we figure out where we're at, we will continue to raise funds to make sure that all those amenities that we said that we could get in there can possibly still be in there, to still make this a destination for southwestern Minnesota, and the best possible pool aquatic facility that we can have for this community. So as, speaking for the whole group of the fundraising committee, we're still on board with this project, and we're still going to keep moving forward after we figure out where we're at.
Thank you. Input from the council?
I have a little input. I was just running some numbers here. I think the total pool budget was like eighteen point three million, and even with hiring Contagity, which I just ran some numbers here, the total cost with designing stuff of about two million, so we're still on target, that's sixteen point three, sixty point five million dollars, what the voters approved. I do support, I mean, I think the risk is worth the reward on this. I will support moving forward with this. I just hope you guys have somebody onsite on Fridays. What drives me nuts is projects that have project managers, and I'm serious, and they're subcontractors working Friday or Saturday, and there's no construction manager on site. That drives me bonkers. If we're paying somebody twenty-five thousand dollars, I do expect to have a project manager every day there's a subcontractor working there, and I, and I will support this.
They had the recommendation from the committee to, to support the construction manager advisor approach, as well as you had the resolution that would authorize staff to negotiate an agreement with Contagity that recommended...
And I'll make that a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by C. Discussion? Yep. Go ahead, Amanda.
And maybe with David, but Stockwell is, is okay, they're ready to work with Contagity, and we're going to have a good relationship there.
So David Locke, representing Stockwell, do you want to make any comments?
Yeah, we, we had a good conversation with, with Contagity already, and we look forward to working with them and the city, and we're supportive of the process and the council decision in regards to a path moving forward, as Craig likes to say, a swimming effort to, to, to keep this thing moving, and we're in full support of the council's decision on this.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we will move to a roll call vote. Stephen, would you call the roll?
Alcorn?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Meister?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Zinski?
Yes.
Woleski?
Yes.
And Mayor Burns?
Yes. Motion does pass. Do you want to make any comments, representing the, the two representatives from Integrity?
Larry Philippi with Contagity. So I just want to say thank you for your confidence in us, and you know, I think you'll find two people here that'll work harder for you. I know we got to take a, a look back in order to move forward. I think tentatively, we're looking at getting together with a meeting next week to really dig into this, and I think actually even later tonight or tomorrow morning, I'm meeting with one of the contractors who actually was engaged during the bidding, just to see, get some information on, okay, we know we're six million dollars over at twenty-two million, but what makes up the parts and pieces to get us over that, so we can actually target these value engineering items, things that make sense, hit the low-hanging fruit items that we can trim without really seeing too much of it, so, but thirty-five percent over is, is a pretty big lift, so we're going, we're going to work hard for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yes, I'd like to echo a thank you to your confidence in us. We're here to build a relationship alongside that Aqua Center, so appreciate the confidence. Thank you.
And then one final note to say is, for the committee, thank you for putting in the time, and thank you, Sharon, for a lot of extra effort that you put in to kind of keep this on track, and, and so we're hopefully on a timeline that will, will meet the public's expectations, so.
We'll do our best.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Okay, we'll move then to Agenda Item Number Ten, consider the...
Can I add something to the program?
Sure, but you have to come up and talk into the microphone, so...
I can talk very loud.
Yeah.
The only thing that's really, really critical to the schedule?
Kim, I do have to have you come up from the micro, because we're on, it's being broadcast over television.
Or...
Right here. Yeah, at the podium. While you're walking up, I'll introduce Kim Christensen, representing KHC Construction, or maybe you're just representing yourself as a private individual.
No, actually, KHC, but, but the whole project could get a big boost if you could do just the earthwork portion and get that ahead of everything else. That's not going to change, no matter what the design is, for the most part, and there's a lot of earthwork in this project. Lot of unsuitable soils, not real deep, but it's a big site, and it all has to be done pretty much at the same time, and you can't do bits and pieces, because it's a big site, and there's quite a bit of work there.
Yeah, very good input, yeah.
And it's getting late in the season. You already got fall here, so there's only a few contractors that got space to get this project in their schedule yet, and hopefully, somebody local gets that work, so, anyway, that's all I had.
Thank you, Kim.
Yep, thanks.
We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Ten, consider the approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five property casualty and liability insurance. Carla Drown, Finance Director.
Good evening. So it's the time of the year that our property casualty liability insurance is being renewed. This is renewed as of October first of each year. So today, I'm coming to you with a slight increase of about three percent, a little over three percent, and that is overall. This insurance covers the city, Marshall Municipal Utilities, and the library. The breakout, we do not know at this time how that looks against property and auto, we should have that shortly, but we do have the totals of the premium, so we know the total for the insurance renewal. This is a lower increase than last year, because last year, we had the league appraisal of our property, and all of our properties changed across the city, so we saw a larger increase in that area. We do have our insurance agent, Joe Larson, here with us also this evening for any questions to dead, if you have any of those.
Thank you, Carla. Questions?
No.
Any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the property casualty and liability insurance renewal.
I'll make my...
Still move.
Motion by C, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, Stephen, would you take the vote?
Meister?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Alcorn?
Yes.
Woleski?
Yes.
Zinski?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yep.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Eleven, the Consider the Introduction of the Ordinance, Amending Chapter Seventy-four, Article Seven, Division Three dash two permit. This relates to Class Two All-Terrain Vehicles and Utility Task Vehicles. So with that, City Attorney Pam, are you going to start with this?
I certainly can provide an overview. So there has been a desire to have some, an ordinance allowing golf carts in the city, and there are some stat, states restrictions that are already set forth in the statute, and the ordinance was prepared primarily by city clerk, so the city clerk might have some additional comments to make.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Stephen?
Yes, so this topic has come up numerous times with Legislative and Ordinance Committee. At the last committee, there were proposed amendments to have golf carts on same roads as UTVs. There was also discussion on having some of those roads that were thirty-five miles per hour or higher to be not allowed for golf carts. There was also requirements for seat belts, headlights, taillights, turn signals, and driver's side mirrors, and then for state statute, it also requires a slow-moving emblem on the golf cart as well.
Okay. Any input from the Legislative Ordinance Committee?
So LNO Committee met on this, and there was a, it's just been a longstanding thing, and there's people who are pro, and there's people who are con, and ultimately, it was decided just to bring it to City Council and let everybody make their vote, and that's where it lies.
It came out of LNO as a two-one vote, a two-supporting, one-not-supporting, so, I mean, in my opinion, it gives our citizens another choice. I'd like to give people a choice to do as they like in their communities. There's communities that have these, they don't have any trouble, and so I just like to have people have options. We're always saying we got to keep people in town, give them options, keep people in town. Just don't run them over.
I'd like to, I'd like to just, I mean, if I could, I, I understand the desire, I have some concerns, because it's getting into, you know, the golf carts are kind of slow enough, they're more of a utility, everybody, and my fear with this, one is, obviously, if it's truly a golf cart, it doesn't go very fast. Most of them, I think, probably go just barely over twenty miles an hour, so even on the thirty mile an hour streets, they're going to be somewhat of an inhibitor, which is frustrating, and we're, you know, we always get a little bit of usage creep, so, you know, I, pretty soon, we, we already see UTVs on the, on those state highways on Main Street, and a little bit on College Drive, other places where they're not supposed to be, and, you know, golf carts are typically, kids like fourteen, twelve to fourteen, are typically operating mom and dad's golf cart, and putting them on the street, you know, I just, I'm just afraid we're going to get creep, and they're really not designed for that. I like the idea, if they're approved, to have seat belts for all occupants, that's a plus. I really, I have a little bit of a hard time seeing the thing. I'm certainly not opposed to bringing it to public hearing. I think that's the appropriate thing to do. I guess I'm kind of understanding the two-to-one mix, because I'm really mixed about it all, so I, I again, like to see people have freedom to use their property, but having been a truck driver for a number of years, putting golf carts in the public streetways, if, if we get creeped, or they're going on the larger roadways, and mixing with semi-traffic, I think we're asking for a very undesirable mournful incident to happen, so I just hope that if we do this, we're very clear about where they cannot go, because I'd hate to see them mixing on our major roadways with the, with the very large vehicles, and especially with limited skilled drivers, a lot of times possibly going to be the ones operating them. So that's just, my caution is that when you approve it, you're, you're going to have, you're going to have creep, and I just think we're asking for trouble.
So the, the clarification on the, the roadways that would be permissible on the proposed ordinance would be those roadways where the speed limit is no more than thirty miles per hour?
Right.
And when it is a, a state highway, cross perpendicularly. I live in a neighborhood that you would not be able to get out of the neighborhood, because you can't get out of there. It's either through a J-turn or on a, a state highway, so this would not be applicable to any of the residents in the neighborhood where I live.
So I don't want to get into splitting hairs, but as I understand it, in crossing those public roadways, where we have streets that cross that utilize J-turns on the major roadways that, that require the J-turn, I believe that using the J-turn with those other locally permitted special-use vehicles, that J-turn is considered the proper road crossing, isn't it?
Officer Marshal, Chief Marshal shaking his head as a no.
Okay, well, that, that's, yeah, so that adds just, yeah, I, I get it, I just, I'm so worried about those mixing with bigger traffic, that we're going to end up with a tragedy that, that I don't know is justified.
And I think as the law reads, is you cannot operate those on a state highway or US highway now, period. Right, that's what the state statute says. I mean, that, that, it is what it is, that's, that's the law already.
Yeah.
But you can cross over it.
Cross over. At the nearest angle.
Mayor was referencing...
Yeah, so you're correct, Bob, you'd have to go see your neighbors, and that's it.
Mm-hmm.
Well, you, you could cross over it.
It almost, yeah, you could get...
You can, you can cross Fifty-Ninth Street, but that's upset.
But then you can't get out of there.
You can go to Menards and Walmart.
Yeah, I, I have a lot of concerns, too, and as Craig, you know, alluded to some of those, and already explained that, but, you know, it's an equity, it's an equity and inclusion issue, because not everybody can afford one, because of all the requirements that you have to have one, and then you have, and then the cost of it, and it's also not something that we can just try, because it's not fair for people to make an investment, and then we say in a few years, okay, it's not working out, can't have anymore. Now people have bought this golf cart, and they're going to be really upset about it, and, you know, like Craig said, this, we're opening a can of worms, a lot of kids are going to be riding it, because I, every time I see a golf cart, there's usually kids on it, because I think with the illusion that it goes slower, people think it's safer, and they can just let their kids sneak on there. And I have talked to people from other towns, too, and they, some of them have said that they regret it, and they're in smaller towns than us. We are a really busy town, we have bikes, we have scooters, and, you know, I wouldn't have an issue if a golf cart could go the speed limit, but it does not go the speed limit, and, you know, people can get pulled over for going under the speed limit, so a golf cart is right up there with it. So, yeah, I am the one that voted against it, and I hope everybody kind of sees the concerns that I have.
Good discussion. The, the action item would be whether or not to introduce this.
I think it's fair we introduce it, and hopefully, the public, the people are interested in these, the public comes and speaks, and we can hear what they say, so I would make a motion to introduce it and give the public their chance to speak their minds on this, myself.
Clarifying that, you know, typically, it's not a public hearing. Is your motion to introduce it and include a public hearing?
I would include a public hearing to give people a chance to, to give us their view on it. If nobody shows up, then we know that their view is not that.
Okay, so his motion is introduce and have a public hearing.
I'd second that.
So motion by Jim, seconded by Steve. Discussion?
Yeah, and I, I agree with bringing it to public hearing.
Stephen, would you call the roll?
Zinski?
Yes.
Alcorn?
Yes.
Woleski?
No.
Meister?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is Agenda Item Number Twelve, the Batum and Chip Sealing of various city streets, we have a change order, the final change order to consider, as well as the acknowledgement of the final pay request. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. On March twenty-sixth, the council authorized city staff to enter into a contract for up to one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars with Pearson Brothers of Hanover, Minnesota. That contract has been successfully executed. Total contract amount, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and five cents. Staff would recommend approval of the final reconciling change order and the final payment.
Questions for Jason?
Jason, we budgeted at one sixty-five, and we're still coming in at one fifty-two, so this is still coming in thirteen thousand below. They just gave us a very good bid, so we could do more work with, at a lower cost, the way I understand this.
That is correct. How we typically bid the chip seal project is we have some streets listed that we want to chip seal, and then we list some alternates, so if the prices come in favorable, we'd like to slide the alternates into construction as well, so we were able to add two alternate streets.
Any other question for Jason?
I'll make a motion to approve the final.
Back in.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Stephen?
Schroder?
Yes.
Alcorn?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Meister?
Yes.
Woleski?
Yes.
And Zinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Consider the Adoption of the City of Marshall Strategic Plan for Twenty Twenty-four, Twenty Twenty-seven. This has been a, a topic of considerable work, and then it was... work and then it was in, presented in final form at a work session two weeks ago to the Marshall City Council. So, uh, so we have had a chance to review it in detail. Sharon, you want to add anything to that?
I'll be really brief, but as Cheryl presented at the last meeting, we did initially start this with a survey of council and the entire city staff, which created some foundation for discussion. We had an all-day staff meeting to further refine it and then of course, coming back to council to get comment. There's four main pillars of the strategic plan, quality of life, which includes everything from parks and recreation, community ed and public safety, community resilience, which not only includes facilities and infrastructure improvements, but also looking at our staff and how they contribute to the resiliency of our community, economic vibrancy and growth, which of course is always a key component of a city that's trying to be competitive and especially our city being a regional center. And then an informed, engaged and inclusive community, which didn't hit it really hard because we do have our DEI commission that's finalizing a DEI strategic plan as well, which will bring that forth. But we are going to be hitting some of these items really hard. Maybe not a favorite of staff, but we've been putting it on as a regular agenda item on staff meetings going forward. But really see this as a really good team document, not only staff reviewing it, working on it, but the council. And we make a really good team. And so I'm glad we have something to go off of, uh, for the next several years. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
The only thing I would add is, um, you know, as part of the implementation of the strategic plan, if it is approved by the council, is also communicating that to the public. And I think each of those, uh, the pillars of the strategic plan could be a topic for a presentation on Studio Eight over time, so.
Spending money and putting time into something like this and to hear, you know, that it's going to keep coming up and you're going to keep working through it. I know a lot of times it's easy to put on a shelf and forget about it. So it's important to keep that in mind. But it's all, it's all good. Great.
Other input? If not, is there a motion to approve the strategic plan?
So moved.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda. Discussion?
I just have a quick question for Sharon. Um, how did you decide on Cheryl for consultation?
I had discussions with the mayor and he had experience in some other organizations she didn't work with, but she's also very well known in local government. And she was actually really booked to do this. So for a brief moment, um, we didn't know if she would take this on. So this is another situation. We didn't seek RFPs. Um, we selected them some through discussion. I will say there's actually not a lot of facilitators who go through this. They're kind of getting harder to find. And I always say with this type of work, it's, it's a lot harder than it looks. She did a lot of work on the backend. Wasn't just the, you know, the council work session and the staff meetings or the survey. There is a lot of, a lot of input put in, um, that she didn't see. So, and I, I want to comment too, just from what council member Schroder said, the hard work kind of does begin now, is really kind of putting spade in the ground and seeing how you move some of these things forward. But when we bring things forward to council, we'll kind of acknowledge it to as part of the strategic plan to kind of help build some support for it. So anyway, hopefully that answered your question.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Steven?
Wuleski?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Meister?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Alcorn?
Yes.
And Mayor Burns?
Yes. And the motion passes. Okay, we'll move to agenda item number 14, would consider the resolution that would adopt a preliminary 2025 property tax levy. We are required by state statute to, um, to establish and not to exceed, um, a property tax levy. That would be, have final adoption prior to the end of the year. The council has had numerous workshop, workshop sessions on reviewing and deliberating and discerning the property tax levy that is coming before us tonight on resolution. So Sharon?
Yeah, I just want to make a few brief comments. I know that EJ has some, several slides to show just to recap, um, where we started and where we're going to end up here. But just a brief overview, we started at 14% and that was really after some initial review too. So it could have been a little bit higher, but that was really our starting point. Realize that this, this particular decision, especially the one in December, it's a really hard decision for council because it affects, um, it affects our residents. But I do want to state that this is a balanced budget. In years past, we've used reserve fundings. That is not true for this particular budget. So it's really based on reality of, of revenues and expenditures, which makes it structurally more, um, there's integrity in, in the particular document. The other thing I just want to add is revenue, which we've been talking about a lot over the last several years, is flat or decreasing. Some of them in particular, we highlighted this year, gas franchise fees based a little bit on the climate. But what we've been seeing over the last four or five years, cable franchise fees, just based on market and consumer choice. And LGA, which we have seen some increases, but for 2025, uh, was relatively flat. And then finally, I just want to add, I know that both EJ and Carla put a lot of time and effort into it this year, especially this year. We've been transitioning to new software. It has meant some challenges, but they both pulled it off and I appreciate the work that they did. And of course, the work that EJ has done with presentation. So just wanted to add those comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Sharon. EJ, I'll turn to you.
Thank you. So we did throw together a few slides, just so we kind of go through to help the public understand where we're at, why we're at where we're at. So five-year comparisons on the screen right now kind of shows where we were from, from payable 2021 to what's proposed payable 2025. So that 9.8 million is, does represent a 9.8% increase or what was approved for 2024. Go ahead. The next slide shows kind of the history of our funds, of the fund level, where we're at for the past five years. Uh, you can kind of see that our general fund and our debt service fund have both had increases over that period. Um, the, the most significant increases. Go ahead. This is the detail for the numbers people, so that represents that. So again, this shows the 9.8%. You can see the general fund by itself is just under 7%. Capital equipment fund is up significantly, but that's because we're going from a $300,000 levy where we've been. Uh, the one year that showed, 2023 shows 150. If you remember, we used 150,000 of ARPA money that year as well. So it really has been a $300,000 area for a few years. Going to 500 is to the 500,000 level. That extra 200,000 is to, uh, purchase equipment or purchase vehicles as opposed to leasing them via enterprise. Something that, uh, some council members wanted to do this year and is important. Uh, the street improvement fund's up slightly. That's where some of the projects Jason uses. Um, chip ceiling, I don't believe is out of that, but it, this would be the overlay type fund. Um, and then the debt service funds are up 11% over last year. Would have been significantly more, but we did have some debt that dropped off. Um, so again, Sharon mentioned we were at 14.25% on our first work session. We're now at 9.8. Go ahead, Steven. Our, our main factors are our largest impacts from that increase. Um, and no surprise for those that follow, follow governmental pieces, that our, our main one is payroll insurances and fringes for our general fund and EDA, which are our funds that are levied for, are up 4.75% based on the 2024 levy. Our debt service, again, we saw some savings from some debt dropping off, but with what we added this year for the SRE, some parks projects, the South Whitney, Lion Circle, et cetera, that's adding 2.56% based on the 2024 levy. And then that changed to go from purchasing instead of leasing via enterprise impacts us by 2.23%. So just those three factors by themselves are over nine and a half percent of our, of our increase. Some of the individual items, just to make you aware of, again, personnel, we, we don't have any union contracts or COLAs set for 2025 and beyond. Uh, all those union agreements are up, um, at the end of this year. Uh, health insurance, we do have 10, 10% budgeted. We're not under contract for 2025. Uh, and the work session on October 8th will be the first time that we talk to you about some options for that. Um, again, Sharon mentioned LGA, we pretty, was pretty flat. We did see a pretty significant increase from 23 to 24. Uh, this past year, it was just over $6,000 increase. Uh, we, we do use a very slight amount. We're, we're planning to use $25,000 of public safety aid in this, in this budget. So it isn't exactly but balanced, but we're, we're pretty close for, for where we're at. And then, go ahead, Steve. Um, this is a slide that we've talked about at the work sessions that just shows that, you know, based on the growth in the community, um, we could have had a three and a half percent increase if, that would not have been seen if your property value didn't change just from growth in the community. We're obviously higher than that. So go ahead. This one kind of shows that for residential properties, what this impact would mean to that 9.8% increase for $100,000 residential property would impact about $28 a year just on the city share of taxes. $150,000 property be impacted by, be increased by $48. A $300,000 property, the increase would be 111. And then we have the various breakouts there for the commercial property as well, which for 150,000 ranges from 86 all the way up to a million dollar commercial prod, uh, property would, would impact by, increase by $738. The next two slides are just some of the calculation of those, um, for both residential and then the commercial. And then our last one, just for some comparables, again, for some of the preliminary increases we're seeing, excuse me. You'll notice that we're not alone, excuse me, with the amount of increase. Lot of double digits. And interestingly enough, from when I presented these on, at the last work session on September 10th, is that three of the, three of the cities actually adopted increases that were higher than what were proposed at that point. Um, Northfield at that time was looking at 15.8. They increased it to 17.2 is what they approved. Oatana was looking at seven and a half and they did eight. And Worthington was looking at 16.85 and they did 18 for different reasons. So, um, as we tried to whittle our way down, and again, a lot of cities do that as well. We've also had, they've, these particular cities had additional pressures where they've, they've actually increased it, uh, from there as well. So all that said, um, if there are any questions, we'd be happy to entertain, but the staff recommendation would be to approve the resolution to adopt the preliminary levy for 2025 at the 9.8% increase. The resolution is in the packet. That includes the breakout by fund. Um, and then that resolution also sets the truth and taxation date, time and start time and location, which would be December 10th at six o'clock during the city council meeting.
Thank you, EJ. And once again, thank you to the administration and finance staff for your, uh, heavy work on this. Input from the council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Craig?
Yeah, just one thing to, to point out is this is the maximum that we can do. There's still opportunities for us to look if there's savings to be followed, we can, but this is the highest amount that we can go for. This sets our ceiling for the year.
Yep. And Jim?
So what I think, I know I've been one pushing to keep the levy down lower than this, but I'm willing to support a 9.8 because we're getting out of the enterprise leasing, which was something we tried. It is actually, it's gonna be some long-term, or short-term pain for some long-term gains. It'll get significantly more cost effective in the next years to come. I mean, leasing just, it did not work out well and, and that's part of, if we take the enterprise piece out of it, our levy would be 7.57, which is, um, would be a very good levy. So we're just getting out of a, a decision we as a council made that did not work out.
Other input? If not, I would entertain a motion to, on the resolution adopting the preliminary 2025 property tax levy.
I move the resolution.
Motion by Craig. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by C. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Steven?
Schroder?
Yes.
Meister?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Alcorn?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Wuleski?
Yes.
And Mayor Burns?
Yes. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number 15, consider appointments to various boards and commissions, bureaus and authorities. Earlier this evening, the, um, council did meet in special session, interviewed applicants. And based on, on the applications and the interviews, I would recommend that Jeffrey Cordes be appointed to a vacant term that will expire May 31st, 2026 on the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee and that Brandon Antoine be appointed to a vacant term that will expire May 31st, 2028. I would offer that as a recommendation to the council and entertain a motion to affirm.
So moved.
Motion by Steve, seconded by C. Discussion? If not, we'll move, we'll move to a vote. Steven?
Schaefer?
Yes.
Meister?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Wuleski?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
And Alcorn?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to commission board liaison reports. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just one quick thing for sure. I just want to go back again and really thank the Aquatic Center Committee that worked, the council members, Wuleski and John Alcorn, and then all the staff, our city staff. And, um, you know, again, just really appreciate the amount of work that, that went into doing the, the reviews of the potential, uh, construction managers and all the efforts to move forward. And just thank everybody that was involved in that, all the people that did the proposals and that was great. And then also other committee commission work. And I know that, that Jason will be including the stuff from PINT in his follow-up. And then there's additional work to, to happen there also. And, uh, again, thank you of the council for supporting in the budget proposal, our efforts to do like council member Lizinski talked, to move forward to correct, uh, something that we tried with the enterprise agreement that just didn't work out the way we had hoped. And, uh, like we always say, if we make a mistake, the one thing about being an elected official, we have the ability to go back and, and make repairs and, and, uh, make adjustments and try to make it better. So, um, we learned something very profound in that. And, uh, I think there's disciplines that come out of that agreement that will be able to continue forward on the council. Um, that enterprise agreement wasn't all bad. It just cost us too much to do the right thing. Um, and I think bringing it back in-house, we can still do the right things and have the cost savings by doing that administrative work in-house that, uh, enterprise is doing for us. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Steve?
Um, EDA met. We talked a lot about childcare and we've talked about that. It's a chronic issue and EDA is working arduously. Lauren is really working hard to pull it around, but it's, it's hard. Um, there is, uh, what else do we have? Um, some other things. We did a, uh, they're going to do a school tour. The bus tour is when?
October.
October 22nd.
October 22nd. EDA is going to go on a bus tour around the city and see what's developing and what's coming on. And there's, um, we're close on the third building, or third spot at Shop, or at Shopko. So that's going to be developing. So Marshall's is working.
Very good. Amanda?
I, we didn't have planning commission or public housing and I missed EDA as I was waiting to find out if I was going to be a juror.
Yep. And might have not met since we last met. John?
Nothing.
C?
We haven't met.
And Jim?
I have nothing.
We'll move then to council member individual items. Jim?
I think I spoke enough tonight.
C?
Um, I attended Prairie Jam last Tuesday, um, put on by CVB. And the five other people that I went with were all from out of Marshall. So, um, it is exciting to know that, you know, this event is bringing a lot of people into Marshall. Um, so I just want to thank Adrian Cassie and the Prairie Jam Committee for putting an amazing concert on. And also, um, I know she had, um, sent an email letting us know too, that Preston and his team did a great job supporting them. Um, and then, excuse me, and then welcoming week event. Last year we had about 400 people and this year we had over 500. So, um, really exciting to see more people come out and, um, you know, show that we are welcoming community. It's held at Justice Park every year. So, um, and we also want to thank Southwest Initiative Foundation for helping to, um, provide funding to make this possible. So that we're able to, um, provide all the, um, flatables and, um, all the people that were voluntold to be in the dunk tank. Um, thank you to them because the kids had a lot of fun dunking. I think Sergeant, is it Reiki? Am I saying it right? Reiki was dunk a cop, you know? So the kids had a lot of fun doing that. I think his daughter dunked him a few times. Um, so I just want to thank the welcoming week committee for such a great job for putting this event all together. That's all I have.
Very good. Very good. John?
Nothing.
Craig, do you have anything?
Nothing, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have nothing.
Amanda?
Neither do I.
The only thing I would add is, uh, uh, and I didn't do this at the beginning of the meeting, but to acknowledge and welcome the, we have members of the Marshall Leadership Academy that are also in attendance this evening as part of your ongoing, um, work